All right, we'll go ahead and call the meeting to order for the Inglewood Common Council Monday, November 30. We have a roll, please.
Councilmember Coffey.
Present.
Councilmember Olson.
Here.
Councilmember Sharkey.
Here.
Councilmember Dow.
Here.
Councilmember McNerby.
Here.
See, we have young people with us this evening. It's good to see you all there. We have some students from Tryon. Would you stand up, introduce yourself, and tell us where you're from, please?
I love that.
Trying to warn you.
Oh, very warm.
I'm Clay Greenwald. I'm from Seymour, Indiana.
I am Boston Mercino. I'm from Defiance, Ohio.
I'm David Love. I'm from Indianapolis, Indiana.
Well, thanks for coming up and spending the evening with us this evening, and thank you for choosing Tryon University for your education. We're glad to have you in the community for the few years that you'll be here with us. But thank you for coming. Appreciate it. See, we have some other young people. Can we, can we have them stand up and introduce themselves?
Yeah.
I'm Daniel Cook. I'm a senior at Inglewood High School.
I'm Isaac Sanders. I'm also a senior at Inglewood High School.
I'm Leela Wolf. I'm a senior at Fremont High School.
I'm Lexi Lovell. I'm also a senior at Fremont High School.
I'm Savannah Terry. I'm in seventh grade at Prairie Heights.
I'm Rebecca McFicker, and I'm a freshman at Fremont High School.
My name's Kelly, and I homeschool, and I'm a freshman.
And my name is.
Glad to have you with us this evening.
Oh, sorry.
Very, very.
My name is Sonia Waters, and we are with Indiana Youth and Government, like from the Y. So the Indiana Youth and Government Program is at the Y. So thank you for letting us come.
Now, you've been touring our facilities, I understand, for the last number of weeks. Is that right?
We have before, yes.
Wondering where to start.
Okay, okay. I want to ask you to describe in great detail. Because the superintendent's sitting right next to you. Anyway, welcome and thank you for, thank you for being here. Request approval of the October 20 minutes, please.
Aloud.
Second.
Motion second, any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Or opposed. Unfinished business ordinance number 1791, 2025, and ordinance reduction, excuse me, appropriation reduction ordinance for the Community Capital Development Fund for third reading.
So moved.
Second.
Motion second, any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed. Ordinance number 1792, 2025, and ordinance prohibiting except offenders from being on city park property, third reading.
So moved.
And second.
Motion second, any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed. Other unfinished business. I told you last council meeting, we had met with the superintendent of IDAM. He reached out to me late this afternoon. He wants another meeting, so we will be setting that up in the next week or so, and we'll let you know what the outcome of that is. Could be good, could be bad, but he is working on it. We do appreciate his attention to the matter. New business ordinance number 1793, 2025, and ordinance pending Inglewood Municipal Code Title 10 Vehicles and Traffic, Chapter 10.25 Parking. This is on Joe Wheeler Street.
So moved.
Second.
Motion is second. Any discussion?
Anybody object to this that we don't? Amanda's not here, but.
I think the traffic commission was totally in favor of it. It's a very narrow street. It's only 20 foot.
I just wanted to make sure what it was you're screaming. It seems like they shouldn't, but.
When the call came into me initially, and I forwarded it to Amanda for the traffic committee, I did speak with Darren Taylor on this as well because the caller had stated that the police had been there and even actually had some issues getting their truck through the traffic, and Darren confirmed that. So I don't believe that there's been any calls disagreeing with the move at all.
I'd have to mention a fire truck sometime.
Yeah.
Mary, you mentioned 20 feet. How wide is a street supposed to be? Or is there an average?
A lot of it depends on the utilization of the roadway. I mean, some of these roads have been in there, you know, long before the newer standards have come out. I mean, typically, you don't want less than 11-foot travel lanes, which would mean 22 feet. But 10-foot travel lanes used to be kind of the norm for a residential area. More worse. But so 20 does get a little narrow, especially if you have on-street parking. If you don't have on-screen parking, then you can have two-way traffic and no problem.
And the caller noted the weekends were way worse, which makes it just much more difficult. I did not go by on a weekend, but.
Yeah, I have.
They do, okay.
Beautiful question.
Yes.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Or opposed. Okay, can we have a drum roll, please, and a big round of applause for Jeff Rowe, Baker Tilly advisor, presenting a 24 financial management reports for water and wastewater. We live for this report.
I'm sure you do. I'm sure you do. I'm waiting with anticipation. Well, it's good to be here with you tonight, Jeff Rowe, Baker Tilly. So just a little bit of lead-in real quick before we jump into the reports. Typically, you may recall, well, these are the annual financial management reports for both water and wastewater. Typically, we issue these in March, April of each year. This year was a little bit delayed because the city was going through the projects with the Pocagin Extension projects, and so we kind of wanted to wait for kind of the financing, everything to flush out before we, so we had good data to put these reports together. So a little bit delayed this year, next year, I anticipate, will be kind of back on track from a timing perspective. So I have, we have two reports. One is Water Wastewater. They look identical, but I have the water in front of me. If you want to pull the one on the front, it should say Water Utility. We'll just kind of go through those here and happy to answer any questions, obviously, if you have. So quite a bit of detail in these reports. What I think we'll do is just kind of really hover over the page one, which is the executive summary. So we kind of try to lay everything out on that page, kind of pull out the the main points, discussion points for this evening, but we can certainly dive into more details if we need to. With, with every report that we do, we really look at two things. We first look at cash position of the utility to ensure that, you know, each utility is meeting, first of all, the minimum reserve requirements that are established, but also, you know, the strength of the cash position. So we start out by looking at that, and then we kind of move on to budget, actual to budget comparison, and then finally to future healthy utility. So that's kind of how these reports are laid out. But to start with, the year-end cash summary for 2024, cash within the water utility increased by about $250,000, a little bit more than that. So obviously, that's an indication that revenues came in higher than what expenditures were expended for during the year for various reasons, which we'll kind of get into here in a minute with the budget comparison. So a good, good year in terms of revenues exceeding expenditures. Also, when we look at the total cash within the utility and we compare that to the minimum reserves that are required, the utility at the, at the end of the year had about $2.7 million above those minimum reserves. So good, strong cash position. We'll kind of see a similar story on the Sewage Works, but good, strong cash, cash position, which really enables the, the utility to be more nimble and also have funds set aside for capital needs or emergency issues that, that come up. So in terms of the actual to budget, in terms of operating revenues, total operating revenues came in about $32,000 below budget. That was primarily in the metered sales category, about $32,000 below budget. The, the good news is that that was more than offset by operating expenses coming in well below budget by the tune of about $207,000. And I know one of the things, sort of the approach, and we've talked about this, I know in the past with past councils, is from a budget perspective, budgets tend to be sometimes orally conservative. So budgets are quite a bit higher, I think, than historical spending levels. So it's not unusual to come in quite a bit under budget. So that helps obviously offset the slightly lower revenues for the year. So non-operating revenues, things like interest income and reimbursements and different things came in over budget by about $90,000, and then non-operating expenses, which is primarily capital spending, came in about $19,000 below budget. So all in all, that all kind of led to the increase in cash, about $250,000 for the year. So how do things look going forward? So what we did, as we have in the past, we forecasted out revenues over the next five years, forecasted operating expenses. Obviously, have the, the debt service associated with the Pocagin extension, so we also added in additional revenues coming on from Pocagin going forward. And last but not least, we, with the help of Amanda and, and the city, put together sort of a CIP over the next five years. So we've projected out capital needs and built that into the, to the rate model as well. So what does that mean, kind of when we look at, then over the next five years, whether rates are, existing rates and charges are sufficient? So what we found is results are rates would be insufficient to cover all of the costs identified based on the current spending plan. That would be based on budget, right? So we know budget is very conservative. So keep, kind of keep that in mind in terms of, you know, the rate adjustment that we potentially may be looking at here. The other thing to keep in mind, too, and there, and there is some, I think, room for, well, maybe some wiggle room here in terms of the overall rate increase that the city may decide to go with is, you know, the capital plan. So if we go back, I do want to kind of go back and look at a little more detail on the capital plan, because I think that can maybe provide some perspective on the rate adjustment that we're considering. Page 13, turn back to page 13. The capital improvements are commonly one of the, you know, one of the primary drivers of need for rate adjustments. And so I think that's kind of what we're seeing here, too. You know, total about $6.4 million in total cap, total capital projects identified for the next five years. Kind of see the detail there. I won't go through all those line items in detail. But when it comes to funding capital projects, what we try and do is look at a combination, especially if there's a significant level of, of capital needs. Look at a combination of paying them on a pay-go basis, so just building, cash flowing those projects on an annual basis. And maybe offsetting that with maybe looking at bonding some of the projects. So, you know, with bonding, obviously, there's a cost to bonding. There's a, a level or an element of interest cost associated with it. However, that does also allow us to spread those capital needs over a period of, over a longer period, right? So I think what we've assumed in, in a rate model is a 20-year period. So we, we took a stab at looking at, you know, what, what would we potentially build into that 20-year bond? And what we like to do is try to target capital that would have at least a 20-year life cycle if we're going to be paying on it for that long. So, you know, we may need to kind of move some of these projects around if the city decides to, to issue bonds. But what we decided here, at least for preliminary analysis, to look at, okay, funding about $4 million through bonds, which we would assume sometime in 2026 or 2027. So 4 million of the 6.4 million would be funded through bonds. And about $400,000 would be funded through TIF. And then $753,000 would be funded of the capital projects identified would be funded through the 2025 bond proceeds that were just issued. So total net rate-funded capital improvements that we're building in is about 1.2 million. So if we just average that over five years, that's about $238,000 per year that are built in, that is built in. You know, pause there before we kind of go back to the executive summary. Any initial thoughts or questions regarding capital or how capital can be funded for our assumptions that we're building in?
I would like to ask a question.
Sure.
The, at the beginning, you discussed the influence of the Pocagin extension. How exactly are we determining how much we're going to receive in income from that project, as well as what about any potential additional rate pairs going to the, I think, going out there? How, how, how is that determined?
Yep, sure. So what we're building in for the Pocagin revenues is a, a level of usage that was based on what the engineers in the city determine based on information from Pocagin. So there's a, and I don't have the flow figure handy, but there is an assumed flow based on historical records. So we're taking that, we're calculating projected revenues based on that level of flow continuing. So for water, that came out to be about $43,000 per, per year in additional revenue. Now, we haven't.
From Pocagin.
From Pocagin, correct. As far as additional connections, we've not added in or assumed any additional connections. So any future connections that would be added as a result of that extension.
Would be a bonus income. And same, and same way with any that, what would say, I'm too saying, that's the. We're saying, we'd be sending water out to, does the rest stop on season night?
We're not going to do water out there, wastewater.
The same issue would be on that.
Correct.
Correct.
Yep.
Right, thank you, sir.
Sure.
Yep, it'll be a different dollar amount, obviously.
But there's been some sort of process.
Yes, correct.
So page 13, the capital improvement, the 2025 bonding, that $753. That's the current project, right, that was built into this bond? Okay.
That's correct.
Okay. So that's already accounted for. It's just if we did propose bonding as noted here for 2026.
Exactly. So the line, yep, so the line that, that's labeled proposed 2026 bond funding, and we just assumed 26, obviously, 26 or 27. That you can see there kind of along, you know, 26, 27, 28, we're assuming that you do projects over a third, three-year period, and those projects would be paid from bond proceeds.
Over that 20-year period.
And we would assume, yeah, we'd assume.
Assuming the 20-year. Okay.
Yep, and, and so the, the line items that have, you know, two asterisks beside them, those are the ones that we assumed would be, or could be bond funded. You'll see a couple at the top are water mains, a couple of them down at the bottom. Well, you know, a lot of those are water mains as well. We've got towers in there, I think, built in as an assumption. I think there was some discussion there, I think perhaps when we talked, and Amanda and Ryan, that some of those North Wayne Street water main projects, there could perhaps be another, I believe, some other source of funding. So perhaps that hasn't been fully flushed out yet, but.
No, we have not. But we're looking at roughly 3/6 of aging infrastructure and water mains that we're looking at replacing. Moving them back on the timeline is not necessarily off the table, or using other sources of funds other than water utility and bonding funds is, is not off the table. There's advantages to doing. No decisions have been made, and we haven't formed an opinion, nor have we already given you a recommendation.
Yeah, that's a good point, too, as we kind of turn back to page one. Yeah, we, we've, we've assumed that the capital needs are paid for exclusively out of the water utility, except for the TIF that we identified in the capital plan. Certainly, if there's other civil funds that the city would like to utilize, or, Mayor, to your point, if some of these projects were delayed or pushed out, that would obviously change the, the rate recommendation.
Some, some of these projects are also scheduled on timing of state and road projects, and they have to be totally scheduled.
So back on page one, rate adjustment recommendations. We've kind of talked around this, but in terms of, based on the assumptions we've built in currently, which we know may and likely will change, we'd be looking at a rate adjustment of about 29%. That would cover operating costs based on budget. That would cover current and future debt service costs, and also all of the cash-funded or rate-funded capital projects, the 200-some thousand that we, we looked at back on page 13. A couple additional noteworthy items. I think we've kind of covered the first two. The last one, the last rate adjustment for the water utility was adopted back in 2021. If you turn back to the, actually, the last page of the report, we shared sometimes, sometimes this is of interest, but how, how does the city's rates compare to other communities of similar size? So page 16. The first column listed there, well, let me step back. What we're showing here are the water and sewer and stormwater rates, bills, monthly bills combined based on an average home. So the first column are based on the current rates. You can see how those stack up there, but total utility bill, you know, almost $79, $78, $70. Under the, the proposed column, you can see what those might look like. That would include for water, the, the 29%, and we'll get to the sewer here in a second. Total bill about $94, and then how you compare to the state average based on communities of similar size. So, you know, the average stormwater rates, about 6, 636. Average sewer bill, about $52, $53. And then water bill, $36, $37 on average, right in that range. Any questions?
The rate increase, you assume you factor it in over years. You wouldn't do one time 29 you're recommending, basically, in over a period of time?
Yeah, we would. So given the, the strong cash position, you know, wouldn't be, would have to implement that at, at one time, so we could look at phasing over multiple years to get to that point. Just know, you know, the further we would phase out, the longer it takes to get to the 29%. You know, we might have to look at adjusting the spending plan to allow for, well, number two, two things. Either adjust the spending plan to account for phasing or be okay with spending down some cash reserves in the interim. All right. We'll move on to sewer. Same, same dance, different song. That's how it, same song, different dance, however the saying goes. So it looks very much the same at page one of the sewage report. Again, starting with cash, total cash for 2024 increased by $579,000. So very strong year in terms of cash, positive cash flows for the utility. Total fund balances exceeded the minimum reserves by over $3 million. Again, good, strong cash position, a little just slightly stronger than, than the water utility as of the end of 2024. Budget, budget to actual activity, operating revenues, about $60,000 below budget. And most of that was in the wastewater collections line item. Operating expenses were $279,000 below budget. So again, the, not reduction expenses, but the fact that the operating expenses came in below budget was, was helpful in, in driving that positive cash flow. Non-operating revenues were about $104,000 over budget, primarily due to, to interest, good levels of interest income coming in. And non-operating expenses were $420,000 below budget. So basically, the capital spending was, was much less than what was anticipated.
Could I ask you a question? I'm just, I'm interested. I learned over my career that when you underspend expenses all the time, it's usually at the negative, it's something that should have been done. For instance, I worked in factories, and we had one manager that every year had his expenses weighed down, but the problem was he wasn't taking care of the facility. So all of a sudden, you had to pay the piper five years out because everything needed to be replaced. Do we have any of that issue going on? Because I, I read, you know, we're, we're doing a great job managing the budget. That doesn't mean anything to me. How well are we taking care of what we own?
Yeah, I don't know if I can answer that. That's probably a better, maybe a better question for, for Amanda or, or others in terms of, are there projects that are being delayed? So, yeah, I don't know if I can answer that question directly. But I do know, again, kind of going back to my earlier comment on the operating expenses, I think that's more of a product. It's probably less about putting off maintenance that's needed, and it's probably more, you just are so conservative with our budgets that you just, it's, your budgets are so high that they're just not realistic and putting this normal spending patterns.
Yeah. Well, I, I'm a root believer in one thing that you said, too, and that is you pay as you go. I, I was always a believer in that as a manager. So I saw there's a lot of good items on the budgets that need to be done in the next five years. So, you know, in the old, in the old days, we would pick up some of those when we underspent budget, pick up some of that stuff, so we'd get rid of that expense later on, but.
Yep.
But I understand you're not, you're not here reporting that. You're reporting on top level. On top level. Got it. Yep. Okay.
I, just a personal observation of mine. I think our department heads do an amazing job of getting the maximum life out of every piece of equipment they have. They don't replace it before it needs to be replaced, but they replace it before it fails. So they do stay up with things, but they're very, there's a very fine line of over-maintaining and under-maintaining. And I think our, both our department heads, Jeff, I think, does an amazing job, and Mitch, who is just now fitting into that role, I think he understands the same concept. Get the maximum amount of life out of your equipment, fix it, move on, and then find the most economical way to repair, replace, and so forth. I think Jeff does a, does an amazing job.
Actually, that, that capital list, Chuck, the way that works is I, I've always, I was trained to call on our wish list. Okay, we know we can't get everything done, but we do have priorities of certain ones that we know we need to get done. So that's how we start out. And if we have time, we do more, and if not, they get pushed out another year. But we make sure that stuff doesn't get so bad that we get.
And to your point, it's one of the pieces that, because this is a high-level summary that's not in here, priorities, needs.
Yeah.
It is a wish list, the way I look at it right here. It's just a high level of what you might be faced with and how you're going to fund it.
Yes. Yeah, and that also reminds me, too, it's probably worth noting, back when we were, when the city was preparing to take on the extension project with Pocagin, as part of the SREP program, they require RORs before the application process, prepare an asset management plan. And the city did go through that process for both water and wastewater, and I think that's a very good tool. And because what that does is it, it looked at, and it's a living document, so it can be, you know, updated and, and revised as needed, but identifies all of the assets within the utility, identifies kind of the age, the criticality, all those things, and then those capital asset replacements are scheduled out or estimated to be replaced over a 20-year period. It's got an estimated cost. It has an estimated date in terms of when it needs to be replaced, best guess. And then that's overlaid with a financial, 20-year financial projection that looks at, okay, is, we have to take these items on in year 10 or year 15. How are we going to pay for it? And what is that, what's the impact on rates? So the city has gone through that process once already, so that document is out there. I think it, I think it's a, it's a great tool. Actually, it's a requirement now, the state, it just was passed this last legislative session, that all utilities have to do that now going forward. But the city does have that, that baseline now established for, for each utility for asset management planning purposes. Right. So in terms of rate recommendation, we're looking at, you know, about 14%. Again, could be something that could be phased in over time, given the strong cash position, or if the city decides to infuse cash outside of the utility. All those things could, could impact the level of, of increase that we're looking at here. The other thing I think is worth pointing out is that the utility, Sewage Works has bonds that are outstanding from 2010 that mature payments are in 2029. that are outstanding from 2010 that mature payments are in 2029. So, starting in 2030, which is just outside our five-year period, the utility will be freed up of about $175,000 per year that every year would normally go to debt service, but then that'll be freed up and could be used for capital projects or just absorb inflationary increases within the utility. So, something to keep in mind going forward, that that will certainly help and could help reduce the amount of the increase if needed, so. I've touched on most of the things on our executive summary. We kind of already looked at the rate comparison, so it's the same in both reports, which is on the last page. The last rate adjustment, I believe, for sewer was 2020. So, I think we're about five years removed, almost six years removed from the last rate adjustment on the sewer. While I'm thinking of it, the question from the council person about Fort Kagan revenues, on the sewer side, we did add in the additional revenue, which accounted to, or accounted for as much as $57,000 per year, starting in 2027. So, that helps with the overall financial projection as well. All right, any questions?
On your long-range radar, I would note that one of these days, we will be looking at a plant expansion of capacity. I think we're currently 64, 65?
It's 2% right now.
Where they want you to run at?
75, they start getting worried.
You probably better have a plan at 75, 85 to 90%, you really better be worrying.
Yeah.
We, much like Fort Kagan, we've had other unserved areas talk to us about possibly serving them. It made it very clear that we will not financially penalize our legacy users to expand coverage for other folks. We've put up that statement many times, but one of these days, we will be looking at plant expansion. And being one that has sat in your chair when we got the emergency call to do a plant expansion, I know how painful it can be, so we're just kind of giving you a heads up that we need to start thinking about this.
Do I understand it right, we had over-capacity on water?
Water, we're in good shape. We've actually, year over year, we've actually seen decrease in gallons sold. Everybody goes to low-flow toilets and low-flow showerheads and conserve this and conserve that. We used to put out 1.2, 1.3 million gallons a day, and now we probably run $800,000, somewhere in there. So, we do have a lot of capacity in the water capability, but we, not so much on the wastewater.
Is there a direct correlation between water usage and how much you use and see goes through wastewater?
Oh, yeah, yeah, the billings go hand in hand. Build your wastewater by how many, we don't, very seldom do we build wastewater on a meter. It's usually based on the water sales going into the facility, as we assume so much is going to go out. That's how we compute the wastewater bill. Yeah, there's a direct correlation.
So, we're not in sync as far as, and it's not a negative thing.
We, we treat more wastewater than we produce water because there's infiltration in our system and stormwater.
Okay.
So, our average flow in our wastewater treatment plant, Jeff, why am I talking? You should.
During the drought, we're averaging about $800,000 a day. Normal is about a million a day. During rainstorms and stuff, of course, we go higher, so.
We have a current study going on, right, for the wastewater plant?
Yes.
Yes?
Yes.
When is that going to be completed, do you recall?
I'm not sure on that completion date.
Okay.
They're still running numbers.
Okay.
They're doing collection system and treatment plant, all.
Oh, they're doing both?
Yeah, they're doing everything to figure out the flows.
Okay.
And it's not uncommon to see diminishing returns on rate increases. Sometimes you put a rate increase and you'll end up seeing lower sales. People get more conservative because of bill start. It's not unusual to see a diminishing return on a rate increase.
I just find the correlation interesting that we were talking, if we had extra capacity in water, but we're talking about a 29% increase to cover capital costs. And we have under, we need more capacity on the waste side, but we only talking a 14% increase. So, it's like.
A lot of that increase in the water side has to do with the aging infrastructure. Calverly Lane, William Street, up to North Wayne Street, that's 3.6 right there. Just, just replace those water lines.
Not new capacity.
No, you're not increasing capacity at all, you're just repairing the aging infrastructure you have. William Street is in very bad shape. We have patches on patches on patches, and we end up shutting one of our schools down for a couple of days because we had a very significant water main break. But we try to tie those program or projects also to road work. Because you don't want to do a road and then go in and tear it up to put a water main in. If you're going to do it, let's, let's do it. So, a lot of that increase has to do with aging infrastructure. It has nothing to do with capacity increase. And that was actually one of the reasons that we wanted to get involved with the state park was increase sales. The more unit sales we have, the better our rate structure ends up being. So, the more water you sell, financially, it's advantageous to us, which was why we initially wanted to get involved with the state park when they came in and asked us for service. Wastewater was kind of a secondary thought.
Mr. Mayor, do you have suggestions on how you want to see this? Because clearly, we don't want to increase both these at the top level. That would be, that would be economically, especially under the present circumstances, Jimmy Fong.
So, my recommendation, I'm not ready to give you facts and figures and numbers in one of two ways. The water increase, we can do a phase-in approach over so many years and then cancel it if, if we find out we don't need to do it. Or we can go year to year, and that, I'll leave that up to the council. We're not ready to make a recommendation. But no, I would not recommend the 29% increase. But I do think we should move forward with something. Inflation itself has been very detrimental to our financials.
We've been here enough to know that it's 2020 and 2021, just inflation has increased last.
Well, the last adjustment, and it says adjustment on the water side, was a reduction, was not an increase. It was actually water re-reduction.
We have, we have kind of held the line a long time on doing this.
Yeah, and you could tell by the comparison, statewide comparisons, we're, we're fairly, fairly attractive as far as our utility rates go.
So, so I guess by the next meeting, you're going to have some suggestions or?
The next meeting or two, I think, Ryan, don't, don't you think we ought to get a recommendation around for a?
Yeah.
Rate increase?
We do have coming up the comprehensive financial study that Baker Tully is also working on. So, we're kind of waiting for that to come in and see where we're at so that we can look at possibly de-contributing city funds to some of these water projects to try to push down the rate increase also, so we're kind of.
Kind of a holistic look at everything, you know, all at one time, yeah, but I.
So, this may, this may be pushed off.
I don't think it's going to be the next meeting, but.
To begin with, you're probably.
We should be looking at a rate adjustment of some type on both sides.
Are you talking about starting at January 1st, or are we looking at something farther down?
Probably a little farther down the road. By the time you get the ordinance, you pass it, you read it three times, you advertise it, you're probably in maybe second quarter of next year.
It's a process, I mean, we'll start looking at it, but it'll be a little bit. Yeah, and I think, and I think that makes sense to, you know, take that holistic view and look at, also decide to with SEA1 and everything going on and see if, see if there's potential, if the city has a desire to look at infusing cash outside the utility. You know, that would be one way to do it. I think that makes sense, kind of get that under a bill and then come back with a recommendation early, early in '26. As the mayor pointed out, you know, there's a process to that. So, there's a statutory process of introducing an ordinance and publicizing the rates and then holding a public hearing. So, it'll be a two or three meeting event to finally get the rates announced, so.
It would be my preference to use other funds other than utilities for some of these projects. With that said, we need to look at what the restructuring of the property tax at the state level has done to us. We don't want to plan on putting ourselves in a bad financial position. So, we need to know how painful that will be or what options we have there before we commit to using other funds. Any other questions for Jeff?
Thank you, thank you, appreciate it.
I appreciate you coming up and staying in the evening. Thank you very much. Request approval of change order number one for the Fort Kagan Utility Property Division for increase of $6,200 and a change of the completion date.
I move to approve the change order.
All right, motion second, discussion.
Are we, is this something that we really aren't liable for because it's being picked up? Or is this part of the water tower?
This is the water tower.
This is our obligation.
Yeah, it was all bid under one.
Right, Jeff, I was assuming, but I wanted to be sure that this was the water tower, so this is our.
They found some pinholes in the water tower that need to be replaced and some other issues that came up along the way. We want to make sure it's repaired and repaired correctly. Motion second, any other discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Request approval of the 2026 Fire Protection Agreement with Scott Township in the amount of $9,166. That is a 7% increase over 2025.
I move to approve the request.
Second?
Motion second, any discussion?
We continue ongoing conversations with Scott Township also.
As far as the territory goes? Uh, no, they're not included in that right now. Any other discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Statement disclosing the impact of amending the I-69 in West Malmese Street Economic Development Area and allocation of it is presented to the council for your information. It's great reading.
There's a lot of stuff to do.
Reports, or treasure?
Nothing from me.
Kim?
I have no report, Mr. Mayor.
Rita?
I just wanted to thank our community coordinator, Allison Daglow, and our Historic Preservation Commission. They did the first-ever historic cemetery tour at Circle Hill, and it went really, really well. We sold out all three days, which it wasn't about making money, but it was just tracking how many people. So, we had over 120 people at two words of Circle Hill Cemetery. So, I wanted to also thank, it was just a real collaboration. So, it was pretty exciting because the trustee was on board for us in the cemetery, Luanne Holman. And Trine University, her theater group, Teak Fraternity shuttled people, Trine gave us a golf cart to use, which was really great, Angola Parks and Rec helped, the township trustees, I already stated, and then Main Street in Angola Parks, if I didn't say that. So, it was a great just effort, a lot of people there just learning the history of Angola. Kathy Aldridge had done all of that research, she's done it for years. So, it was just kind of this perfect transition, and we had a lot of positive feedback, so.
Did you see the ghosts?
I did not even take, I had to work it, I didn't take the tour, but.
The creators of the seasons, it was interesting, and they did a great.
They did, the actors and actresses did well, and it was a lot of fun. So, I think we'll probably plan something again, but it was a good event, so.
Anything else?
No, sir.
Matt, tell us about the Sheets Family Park, please.
That was so.
One thing I have learned is that, to not make any promises, but it is right down towards the end. We're going through punch list items, making sure that certain things are taken care of before we open anything to the public. Unfortunately, with the timing, we're having to already start the winterization of the restrooms. So, there will be some portable restrooms, because I know everybody's going to be eager to get out there. Timeline-wise, I, I can't give you an answer because then I'll be held to it. I really don't know. So, the flagpole is on order, and they plan to pour the base prior to the frost coming in this year. So, then all I have to do is bring the pole once it comes in, so.
Hey, Matt, before you sit down.
Yep.
Have you had to procure any pumps or anything like in, like a backup inventory? Because I've had some of that stuff's long wait time.
No, I mean, we're just starting to learn this thing. They went through it, and obviously during, in splash pad portion, there's a lot of recirculating pumps and, and filter pumps, and yeah, that's, that's a good question, though. I know the.
So, you're in a new world, is what you're.
I, I, we are, we are very much so in a new world. The restrooms themselves are all electronic flushing with solenoids, and we're used to standard slone valves. And yeah, I mean, it's, it's a, it's a beast, but we're ready for it. It's a, it's an exciting project. We've been talking to lots of groups about it. Every time I'm out there, I got a big grin on my face because it's, it's truly an awesome thing for our community, so.
And one last question.
Yep.
Different than that is, when do all the restrooms get shut down in the parks?
Today.
Okay.
We put a notice out on social media today. We started the process today, but everything's been shut off, and now we're just going through the winterization process. Because next week, they're calling for some 20-degree weather, so.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
Indiana Park Recreation Association, is that, am I saying their name right?
Yeah.
Is highlighting the Sheets Family Park in a meeting they have coming up here next week or week and a half away. Unfortunately, Matt is not going to be able to make the presentation to them, and they're going to have to settle for me, so. I feel sorry for them.
The structure comes down.
Yeah, you do.
Straw, so I almost jumped in a plane this morning.
You really have to go in the park to appreciate everything they've done, and it is absolutely drop-dead gorgeous. They did an amazing job with it. It's fully funded, fully paid for, includes an endowment to help maintain it into the future that is on deposit with the foundation. Great collaborative effort that's gone into putting it together. I can't, there's so many community partners that came together to do this. It's going to be, it is a fantastic project, and I can't wait till next summer they get the splash pad open and watch the kids play.
Kids?
Although, if you're out there, never mind. Mr. Ritter?
Well, I just want to tell you guys, the salt building is done. Friday, we will be having a lift class in there with our mechanical lift. Then we'll start throwing salt in there here very soon.
I saw you had some sand already inside a few of them today.
That was the move for I-Dent, but yes.
Mr. Gaff?
Door part, sir.
Man, this is not your boy, I work. Chief, what do you got for us?
We have nothing.
Got nothing, all right. How about we request approval of allowance accounts payable voucher, $76,910 through $77,095, totaling $597,033.17.
I move that we pay the bills.
Motion second, any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Any other new business this evening?
I wanted, on the record, Ken and I and you had the opportunity to be at the game conference, Ken and I in the audience, and Eric Kaiser put on a great program. And it was a shame that there weren't more people there to see that. The people that were there obviously appreciated it, but I just wanted to commend him because my wife was amazed at the knowledge she got from that, and it really was good. And, and he did a great presentation, he needs to be recognized for that.
I had a conversation with him and gradually, yes, I thought he did an excellent job, backed it out of the park. I also suggested, it was an hour-long presentation, which is a little bit too long for some of the service clubs in the local community. But I suggested he start doing the local service club gigs and shorten it up to 20, 30 minutes and do the same presentation to them, just to let our local public know what's going on. But yeah, he did it absolutely amazing.
Very impressive.
It was, it was well-thought-out, well-done, well-delivered, just a nice, a nice presentation. I agree with you, thank you for bringing that up. Did you win any money?
I did not partake.
Any other? If there is nothing else, with the next council meeting will be Monday, November 17th. We stand to be adjourned, thank you very much.